Declare a gubernatorial disaster proclamation in response to the COVID-19 outbreak, restricting individuals to gatherings of 50 persons or less. We are under 25 now with this latest, and all of the city of Elmhurst is covered by this disaster. In light of the ongoing COVID-19 outbreak, Mayor of the City of Elmhurst has determined that an in-person meeting for October 26, 2020 Committee, the whole meeting, may not be practical or prudent for all. All of the aldermen of the City Council participating in the October 2020 Committee of the whole, whether in the physical location, wherever their physical location, shall be verified and determined that they can hear one another and can hear all discussions and testimony. City Manager, my understanding that we have no alderman participating electronically. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct, Mayor.
Okay. That having been said, I would ask that you all join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ask Cork Tamer to call the roll.
Kennedy?
Here.
Hanquist?
Absent.
Brennan?
Here.
Mulliner?
Absent.
Deuter?
Here.
Beremus?
Here.
Dunn?
Here.
Bram?
Here.
Palomsky?
Here.
Cahill?
Here.
Toledo?
Here.
Park?
Absent.
Levin?
Here.
Ten present, three absent, one vacancy.
Ten present, three absent. We have a quorum. On to Agenda Item Three, Public Comments. Mr. Cop, did we have anybody sign up for public comment? Is there anybody on the line, by any chance, who called in for public comment? Before I go through my speech, is there anybody in the audience who wishes to participate in public comment? So please identify yourself. Did we have anybody sign up?
No, Mayor.
Okay, getting a lot of noes. We're going to conclude public comment for the evening. We're going to jump into business before the committee. This is an introduction and begin of the fiscal year 2021 budget. Before I turn it over to the City Manager, just want to set the table a little bit for anybody who's new at participating or anybody who is new watching us on our channel. We're here tonight as a committee of the whole to discuss the annual budget. We are required by law to pass a budget before the end of the year. It is our plan, scheduling allowing, for us to meet every Monday night as a committee of the whole and continue this discussion. I will point out to council that there is a fifth Monday at the end of November hanging out there, and we have used that in the past, should it be needed. If all goes well, we will pass this budget usually in our first meeting in December. Give ourselves a little wiggle room. In general, I will say this, the budget is a roadmap of anticipated spend to the best of the ability that staff came up with. Doesn't necessarily mean we are committed to spend it, but it's a plan. Pretty much anything that exceeds City Manager authority of $20,000 or involves a contract is going to go through committee, so we will be looking at it again at some point. Ultimately, we are hoping to approve this budget before the end of the year. I will point out that approving the budget doesn't necessarily mean that you approve every single budget item finally, and you will not have an opportunity to discuss it whether it's in committee or council throughout the year. Staff is here. Staff will be presenting individual sections when appropriate. Individual staff members will trade off and highlight certain parts of their budget that they're in control of that they think might be notable for aldermen. That does not preclude anybody from asking any questions about any line item. You will also note at the end of many sections, there is something called a J form or a justification form. City staff has the ability of running a report of anything that has a change of 5% and greater than $2,500. It's a way for staff to take another look at that item and determine whether or not they believe it should be on the J form. So if you have a question while you're going through your budget book, sometimes go to the end of the section, you might get an answer that says, oh yeah, we bought another truck or something. So that's what that J form is there for. Certainly, aldermen are encouraged to ask staff any questions they so like. Staff will have some answers for us today, and any answers they don't, they will follow up with. That leads me to motions to amend and our circle back list. So it's appropriate for any alderman to make a motion to amend at any time. However, what we've mostly done in the past, unless we identify a mistake, is we kind of keep a running tab on every meeting of what we call circle back. So someone might have a question and say, okay, I see, Chief, you want to buy a new fire truck. How many miles does their old fire truck have? What's its useful life? You know, what's the advantage of the new truck? And the discussion might be too great for tonight, so that alderman will say, okay, Mr. Manager, I want to put that on the circle back list. It gives the person who, it gives the staff person or multiple staff people the ability to gather information. They keep a running list. They publish that ongoing list every week, so you will see that, but that's what we call our circle back list. Usually, the last meeting we have before approval of budget, we review any remaining items that have not been reviewed, but then we go over the circle back list independently, line item by line item, see if the question has been answered by the alderman, and then certainly any alderman can make a motion to make an amendment to the budget. That's the way we've done it in the past, but it doesn't mean that if there's something highlighted today that needs to be acted on, that this council, committee of the whole, cannot act on it. I would also encourage council members, aldermen, between now and the end of budget season, you don't have to wait for these committees of the whole to ask questions. There's 4,000 line items in here. If you see something in the middle of the week and you have a question, feel free to contact someone on staff and ask those questions. Finally, in keeping what consistent over the past eight years, I'm going to say, is that I request that staff keep these conversations and that we don't go past 10 o'clock. That means if we're at 9:45 and we're all of a sudden going to discuss the police department, probably not going to happen until the next time. So let's keep an eye on the clock. I know we started just a little bit later than we wanted, but we're going to get in the groove of things shortly. And with that, City Manager, I'm going to turn it over to you at 8:30.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Morley and City Council members, I'm pleased to submit to the City Council the fiscal year 2021 budget. Budget is typically the municipality's operational plan for the year and for Elmhurst and outlook for two years. For 14 straight years, the city has been awarded the GFOA Distinguished Budget Award. This is due mostly to the organization of our budget, which includes summary information, line item detail of the proposed budget by fund, including, as the mayor said, justification forms for budget details that exceed 5% and more than $2,500 over the previous year's budget, individual fund balance schedules, budget and financial policies and procedures, and supplemental information providing an overview of the city and other details. The past fiscal year was like no other and brought the city into an arena it has not seen in the past. The year started with continued progress towards the strategic plan goals. However, in March, the world woke to the pandemic of COVID-19 and the stress and uncertainty it brought with it. The mission of the city to provide responsive and superior governmental services did not change, but the means and methods to do so relied on creativity, ingenuity, and full support of the entire Elmhurst team. The strategic goals of fiscal reviews, technology upgrades, stormwater control, and economic development efforts did not change either, but the focus and prioritization of those goals required the city to pivot and develop objectives to meet those goals with reduced funding and staffing. The result was a reduction of expenses in excess of $12 million. While the reductions did include project deferral, such as the annual street program, there was not a reduction of city operation service levels. For the 2021 proposed budget, city staff continues to utilize the direction generated in the plan, the strategic plan, to design department goals and related budget requests. Up to now, the city has maintained a general fund balance that represents 25% to 33% of general fund expenditures. However, because of COVID-19 and the resulting revenue decreases, the fund balance of the general fund is projected to drop below 25% level to 23.2% in 2021. It is hoped that the additional revenues that are realized as economic conditions improve can go towards strengthening the general fund. Capital project planning continues, as I outlined earlier with the presentation of the capital expenditure budget. Funding these improvements remains a concern. However, the Finance Committee has started discussing revenue priorities and sources and alternatives to fund the critical infrastructure of the city. Proposed revenues for the city of Elmhurst for fiscal year 2021 total $143,558,203. As indicated in the chart on Page 9, the largest revenue sources are sales, property, and utility taxes comprising $50,019,160 or 35% of total revenues, a decrease of $618,000 from year 2020 due to the impact of COVID-19. Property taxes are proposed to increase by $1,418,886 due to increased pension costs and are offset by a projected decrease in sales tax revenues of $1,453,340. Service charges of $35 million or 25% of total revenues include $29.4 million for water and sewer service charges. The city must continue to monitor legislative proposals in Springfield that would change how revenues are distributed, especially considering the fiscal condition of the region and the state of Illinois and the impacts of COVID-19. In addition, a change in the economy where sales tax revenues declined would significantly affect the city's revenue. In the general fund, which is the major operating fund of the city, the proposed budget expenditures are $67,891,80 for the 2021 fiscal year. Proposed revenues to the general fund are $62,985,365 for fiscal year 2021. Excess expenditures over revenues require use of fund balance of almost $5 million for a projected general fund balance at the end of fiscal year 21 of $11,303,298. This balance falls below the city's fund balance goal policy of 25% to 33% of operating expenditures by roughly $920,000. An overview of the general fund revenue source is illustrated in the pie chart on Page 85. The fiscal year 2021 municipal 1% sales tax estimate is $12.8 million and is projected to increase 3% compared to the amount received in 2020. However, due to the anticipated loss of one commercial business in 2021 that generated significant sales tax revenue, as well as weaker overall sales as a result of COVID-19, which is expected to continue into 2021, the projected amount is 4.3% less than the 2020 amount budgeted. Because sales tax is the greatest single source of revenue in the city's general fund, the city is participating in various economic development activities to encourage a diverse economic base and to mitigate against downturns in a given industry. As a result, businesses such as Kai &amp; Kate and Giambrono, as well as many restaurant providers, have developed new products and delivery methods to maintain their own sales and by extension, the city's sales tax revenue. We understand that reliance on sales tax is a reality that must be recognized as a significant factor in the ongoing review of the city's general revenues and expenditures and in planning for the future. In addition to the municipal 1% sales tax, the city levies a 1% home rule sales tax that funds stormwater and other capital projects, as well as some general fund operations. It's projected that the fiscal year 21 revenues will total $6.5 million. The 1% prepared food and beverage tax, including packaged alcoholic beverages, has traditionally been a consistent and significant contributor to the general fund. Despite COVID-19 effects that limit social activities and consumers' ability to patronize various establishments, fiscal year 21 prepared food and beverage tax revenue is projected to increase 8% over 2020 estimated revenues to $1.3 million. Still, the projected 2021 amount is 129,000 or 8.8% less than the 2020 budgeted amount. There is hope that revenue levels will come back to pre-COVID-19 levels by 2023. The 2020 tax levy will be collected in the summer of 2021. The general fund portion of the levy anticipates no increase and assumes continued abatement of the current debt service obligations on all current outstanding debt. With regard to the pension levies, the city levies for its contribution to the city's pension funds based on the current contribution policy, as well as the draft actuarial valuation reports dated January 1, 2020. Significant increases are planned for the fire pension, which is 16.2%, and police pension, which is 20.9% levies. The increases are primarily due to changes in state law relating to pension benefits, as well as adjustments to various actuarial assumptions other than investment and return, which was adjusted from 7% to 6.75% in 2019. Excuse me. City Council policy provides that the city of Elmhurst Capital Improvement Fund receives 80% of the city's share of state income tax, while the general fund receives the remaining 20% of that revenue. Past legislation has reduced the city's receipts by 5% in 2018, 2019, and a portion of 2020. In addition, income tax receipts were reduced as a result of higher unemployment due to COVID-19. Thus, it is anticipated that income tax receipts will fall 10% in 2021 when compared to estimated receipts received in 2020. In addition, only a modest increase of 1% is projected in 2022. The city applies a 1.5 cent per gallon local motor fuel tax. While the proposed FY21 local MFT revenue is projected at $296,000 and reflects an almost 14% increase compared to estimated fiscal year 20 revenue, the 2021 projected amount is 35, almost 36,000 or 10.8% less than the 2020 budget. These funds are designated for stormwater system improvements. The Elmhurst telecommunications tax has been combined with the infrastructure maintenance fee for a combined rate of 6% on telephone use. Elmhurst allocates the telecommunications tax revenue 75% to the general fund and 25% to the capital improvement fund. Fiscal year 2020 estimates are 8% less than fiscal year 2019 actual amounts, and the 2021 budget anticipates a further erosion of revenue of approximately 7% to $1.1 million. The electric tax is a tax on kilowatt consumption. The 2020 estimate receipts are almost the same as 2019 revenue, and a 1% increase in revenue is projected for fiscal year 2021. The 2020 gas use tax revenue estimate has decreased 10% over 2019, and fiscal year 2021 has been projected to increase only 1% because of unpredictability. During fiscal year 2018, the City Council approved a five-year contract with Republic Services for curbside recycling and rubbish collection services. Projected revenues for fiscal year 21 reflect the terms and pricing of the contract, in addition to a city charge to cover the fall leaf pickup service, the spring cleanup event, and miscellaneous administrative expenses. Recently, the city had started to offer curbside composting, and the service is directly billed to the customer by Republic and does not affect the budget. The city's permit fee schedule is designed to charge a fee for services used and to return a significant percentage of revenue back to the city for expenditures needed to operate the community development department, as well as portions of public works and fire departments relative to plan review and inspection services. The permit fee budget for fiscal year 21 is projected at $1.8 million, a 9.8% decrease over the 2020 estimation. While there are a number of building projects going on throughout the city, the amount is less when compared to prior years. In addition, economic factors such as the price of lumber may further decrease the amount of building activity the city sees. Vehicle license fees are a significant source of revenue, and all proceeds from vehicle license sales are designated for street improvements. Finally, cable franchise fee revenues are projected to decrease by 2% to $845,000. Like the telecommunication tax, technology changes, such as the increased reliance on streaming services, drives the decrease in cable television use and related franchise The fiscal year 21 and 22 budgets anticipate minimal rate increases from the DuPage Water Commission. Currently, the city is working with Baxter and Woodman to develop a comprehensive review of water and sewer rates, which should result in rate recommendations. No fee increases for parking are projected at this time for the over 1,500 daily commuter and paid permit spaces. As a result of COVID-19, which has severely curtailed rail travel to downtown Chicago and related commuter parking, fees for parking have decreased by $400,000 or 44% in 2020, and the 2021 projection shows an additional $98,000 decrease. Total revenue for the parking system is projected to be just over $617,000 for the next fiscal year, of which $407,000 is attributable to daily and permit fees. Funds received from the state solely for MFT are restricted by state statute for uses related to roads. The city's share of MFT increased significantly in 2020 due to approved legislation in June 2019, increasing the state's MFT by 19 cents per gallon on gasoline and 24 cents per gallon on diesel fuel. As a result, fiscal year 2019 revenues increased 28% over 2018, while fiscal year 2020 revenues were expected to increase an additional 24%. Because of COVID-19 and the related stay-at-home order by the governor, gasoline purchases were less than anticipated during the year, resulting in an estimated revenue increase of 14% for 2020. 2021 projected revenues are $1,768,000, which is an increase of just over 100,000 or 6.6% when compared to the current year's estimated receipts. Regarding our four TIF districts, the city, and I'll start with TIF 3, the city received its last property tax collection in 2020. The 2021 budget anticipates expenses related to the TIF area, including land acquisition, to be completed in 2021. On TIF 4, which is the North York redevelopment area, property tax increment is projected to continue to increase significantly in fiscal year 21 before leveling off in later years, reflecting the completion of various redevelopment projects. The 2021 budget anticipates expenses related to roadway improvements and installation of sidewalks, as well as costs related to the SIGN retail grant and facade program. TIF 5, which is the Church Road-Lake Street area, 21 budget includes costs related to SIGN retail business grant and facade program. And finally, the downtown TIF, like TIFs 4 and 5, the 21 budget provides for SIGN retail business grant and facade program in addition to street skate improvements. The 2021 budget also anticipates some funding for the metro station for Phase 2 design and engineering services. Overall, the equalized assessed valuation in Elmhurst increased 4.1% for the 2019 levy, and it is projected to increase 4% for the 2020 levy. In spite of the lifestyle changes affected by COVID-19, or perhaps because of those changes, home sales in Elmhurst are extremely brisk. Additional new EAV from both residential and commercial building in the city positively impacts the community as those new residents and businesses share in community costs. In 2019, construction added 325 residential units, as well as various business build-outs that will add an estimated EAV of $56.3 million for the city. McMaster Cars increasing its current facility by 500,000 square feet. Christopher Glass &amp; Aluminum will be constructing a substantial addition as well. Several spec industrial building developments are in construction and will be available for lease or purchase next year. Besides businesses previously mentioned, other businesses that are building or expanding in Elmhurst include Chicago Fire and Water, Haskris, Closet Works, as well as a number of offices that house medical, financial, and other personal services. Despite the impact of restaurants as a result of COVID-19, eateries such as Primos Locos and Lariano's have opened, while Guac &amp; Tacos has added a second location in the city. Major residential construction in the works include the Town Homes at 264 North Addison and The Finn, which is at 183 North Addison, which should all come online in 2021. The fiscal plan continues to follow the results of the 2018 strategic plan update and emphasizes stormwater relief through a number of projects and policies, economic development to continue Elmhurst growth, and sustains the city's strong financial position. This is a sound fiscal plan for the city of Elmhurst for the next fiscal year, and I request the council's positive consideration. I would like to thank the Finance Department staff, along with department directors, for their input and cooperation during the budget process. We look forward to presenting details to the City Council and welcome all questions as we move forward. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. We're going to hear from Chief Freeman next, according to our list here.
That is correct.
Anybody have any questions before we get started? Alderman Toledo.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, use the floor to make a comment at this time before we jump into the individual sections. Thank you. First off, I'd like to thank all of city staff, the Director of Finance and his team, City Manager, and our chiefs and deputy chiefs. A lot of white uniforms that we have here tonight for a very tough year in 2020, a lot of challenges for everybody. Certainly was not an easy year, and as we look forward to 2021, unfortunately, we may have some of the same types of scenarios. As it relates to the budget, a lot of work has been put into this, and I thank everybody for that. But I do want to acknowledge a couple of things. I think I was a little bit disappointed when I saw the budget. You know, we are in a very unusual time. We are in the middle of a pandemic. We know as a collective group that we have debt obligations, we have significant utility priorities, and those things will continue to put pressure on our expenses, taxes and fees that the residents of Elmhurst have to foot moving forward. And so for me, this budget was more of a status quo budget than I would have liked to have seen. I would have liked to have seen some opportunities for efficiencies, a recognition that maybe we don't fully staff up our team in 2021, like we kept it lean this year in 2020, for example. You know, and ultimately, I just want to challenge the council and staff as we go through the next couple of weeks of reviewing the budget, to continue to look for any efficiencies that we can realize, any structural changes that we can make to continue to keep Elmhurst on a strong financial footing while maintaining the level of service and the level of quality that we've enjoyed, but also recognizing the crisis and the pandemic that we're facing and the costs that we need to bear in the years coming. Thank you.
Alderman Kennedy, did I see your hand up?
You did not.
I did not. Alderman Brennan?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you for the budget, City Manager. Along the same lines as Alderman Toledo, you know, I look at the general fund, and we're $920,000 outside of the proposed 25% to 33% range, with revenues at $62 million and expenses at $67 million. with revenues at $62 million and expenses at $67 million. I do hope, over the course of the next several weeks, that we figure out how to reduce our expenditures in that particular area. That's a comment. And can I ask you a question?
Absolutely.
Okay. City manager, and I'm not an expert with respect to the CARES Act and possibly I shouldn't expect you to be an expert in that area either. I think it's some pretty complicated piece of legislation. Are there any assumptions in 2021 factored into this budget at all? And is that just wishful thinking that that could be a possibility?
So, the city applied for $2.4... Well, we actually applied for $5.6 million of CARE funding through the county. The county received a direct allocation to be shared from the state. And the way that... Well, initially, when the county received $161 million, there was no plan on how to share it with municipalities. The county went forward with some plans that they had, and through the DuPage Mayor and Managers Conference, all the municipalities got together and talked about that. We contacted Chairman Cronin and other respective board members and talked about the idea that some of that funding could be shared with municipalities for everything that we've done. Eventually, the county came around to that and allocated on a population basis for CARES Act funding. And for Elmhurst in particular, it was $2.4 million. And there was... Initially, the rules that the county put forth were more restrictive than what the U.S. Treasury Department put forth. So, we were proceeding with that premise that we would have to abide by the county rules. Through additional conversations with county board members and Chairman Cronin, we were able to convince the county that the U.S. Treasury rules were certainly more advantageous for municipalities. And so, they adopted the U.S. Treasury rules. And so, we were able to submit, as I said, the $5.6 million or so of expenses. We received confirmation today that the $2.4 million was approved and that they would be processing that. That will be booked to this fiscal year. I think what... That's a long answer, and I apologize for that, but perhaps what you were referring to was additional federal legislation. We continue to be in contact with our congressional team, both Congressman Krishnamoorthy and Congressman Quigley, to discuss that, and also our senators, to let them know what our need is. My understanding is the last discussions at the federal level is that the next round of funding could include made-up revenues, missed revenues from municipalities, but there's no guarantee on that. So, we did not... Tom, correct me if I'm wrong, but we did not put anything in the budget to reflect that.
Okay. Thank you.
I will also add two things as it relates to CARES Act since it came up. One is the Springfield, or maybe the governor, I can't remember who did it, elected to give money to the top five counties and let the counties dish them out. And that's why DuPage got their chunk, and they got to dish them out, dole it out to the rest of us. And as Jim said, we had robust conversation with them. There's a little bit of money left over at the county. I'm going to say maybe 20 million at this point. They kind of keep finding need for it. Most recently, they're putting together another program that helps restaurants specifically, which Elmhurst Restaurants. I know that our city staff, Aaron Jason, Mike Kopp, have been keeping tabs on that. We'll be posting that. There might be little tidbits that come our way come next year, independent of a new federal bill, but nothing that can be certainly counted on for our budget. Okay. Any other questions? Alderman Bram, did you have your hand up?
Yes, sir. Just to follow up on that Alderman Brennan's question and the answer from the city manager and Director Trozine of the CARES Act and those dollars. So, it's my understanding that Elmhurst was, for lack of a better word, awarded or approved $2.4 million, applied for $5.6 million. Does that mean that $2.4... No, $3.2 million differential is not being considered? What we were approved for is what we're getting for the CARES Act funding? The second question, and I think this might be just more general to all the departments, how is that $2.4 million reflected in what is to be the estimated, I don't know, revenues and/or expenses when we look at this budget this year?
I'll answer the first part, and then I'll ask Director Trozine to answer the second part. The reason that we submitted the $5.6 million is because those are all of the eligible expenses that we had under CARES Act. As the mayor mentioned, the county has 20 million or so that is unallocated. And in the event... I should back up. The CARES Act funding has to be spent by the end of the calendar year in the event that the county does not have expenditures for that money. We would like to be in line for some of that, and that is why we basically threw in the kitchen sink, so to speak, in our request to the county.
So, there's a possibility of seeing some, but don't count on it?
Correct. Tom, do you want to answer the second part?
Sure. On the second part, as far as the amounts built in, as city manager Grabowski mentioned about our submittal of $5 million plus to the county, he also mentioned, I think, in his opening comments about the county actually loosening up their guidelines as far as what was an eligible expense compared to what the U.S. Treasury had put out. Most of that had to do with public safety salaries and everything. So, we were able to submit expenditures for public safety salaries that are included in our budget for reimbursement, and that was the $5 million. So, it was just really general public safety salaries.
So, when we look at the 2020 column in this budget, right? The estimated for 2020, this $2.4 million is somehow in that estimated, right? Revenues as well as expenditures. What I'm asking is if you or the department heads or both could highlight where we're seeing that $2.4 million spread out throughout that 2020 estimated?
And again, it's in the very first line item for the fire on salaries. I turned my page now. But again, it was for all public safety salaries, so fire and police, their base salaries. We were able to submit for that time period. I think it was mid-March through... I'm not sure how we went. So, on page 116, the fire salaries of estimated $4,650, that was part of our submittal, you know, for the $5 million. And those dollars are, including in the general fund in the revenue schedule on page 87 for federal grants. The $2,640, the majority of that is the CARES Act funding.
Okay. I think that answered the question. That's exactly where it is in the budget for the 2020, the estimated. That's that revenue source that will offset the salary... Mostly the salaries in public safety.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, before I turn it over to staff, one last thing I forgot to mention in my opening. If anybody up on the dais here has a question for the benefit of the rest of us, if it's applicable, we ask that you identify the page and the line number and item that you have a question about, and you'll see what we're talking about once we get started. City manager or chief?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to add one comment, though. I understand that status quo sounds disappointing. It doesn't preclude us from continuing to think through the issues that are at hand, I assure the city council. And everyone knows that we are currently under a hiring freeze. While this budget does look at those positions here, it doesn't necessarily fill them into the next fiscal year. So, we will continue to look at what we can do, how we can do that as we move forward in our day-to-day business. With that, I will turn it over to Chief Freeman to review the fire department budget.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. And on behalf of the fire department, I'd like to thank the mayor and the council for all the support you've given us in the past, and I know we'll continue to be there in the future. Those without saying it, it's been a difficult year, and COVID looms over many of the department reports. And we've struggled in some of our areas to complete our mission. The emergency portion of it has been easy. Many of our non-emergent programs that have suffered during 2020, and I'm fearful in 2021 as well. Our emergency responses have gone up considerably in 2020. As I prepared my notes for tonight, we're seeing a nearly 18% increase in fire and EMS-related calls. And consistent since March, when we first hit the pandemic era, we have seen 12% to 13% of all EMS calls have been actual COVID or COVID-suspected type calls. And it's been cause for a lot of concern, a lot of additional resources, a lot of additional training, and it continues to this date as we're seeing a very definitive resurgence in our call load, in our severity of the patients. We track this on a daily basis, and we saw quite the swing for Elmhurst in the summer months. I think people stretched a little bit, got out, and we saw an increase in the spike, at least for Elmhurst, went up, it dropped back down again, and it's on the increase. So, we're continuing to see a lot of things in the emergency field. And as I say, I'm fearful we're going to continue to see that through the balance of 2020 and into 2021. Some of the things we were able to get accomplished in 2020, thanks to the support from the board, we purchased a new aerial ladder, took a very antiquated 20-plus-year-old tower ladder with a basket on the front, took that out of service. And it was literally on its last legs, and thanks to the Public Works, they were able to keep it running. But we were seeing upwards of $500,000 over its life in maintenance cost. It was replaced with a considerably lighter, shorter, wheel-based, what we call a straight-frame ladder. And it's already seen much in-service time, and it's been a real complement to the operations while at the same time sort of paring down what we have to send to calls and how big and how much and how much equipment we have to put on things. And it was based on a study of what the real risk potential is in the city of Elmhurst and on a day-to-day basis, what we have to be prepared to protect. Anecdotally, we are also seeing a reduction in cost of maintenance from Public Works for our fleet because now we have a continual newer fleet. And as a result, we're seeing that the cost of maintaining the apparatus in the Elmhurst Fire Department has dropped, which is a good thing. So, part and parcel to the purchases, we're seeing reduced expenses on that side. Very difficult, while part of our success is in programs such as training, fire prevention, public education, code enforcement, many of those programs took a very serious diminishment because we weren't able to train to the volume that we needed to. We weren't able to get a lot of our personnel out together. We weren't able to do mutual aid training, which is a backbone of our support network that we have for emergency calls. Public education suffered greatly. We weren't able to get into the schools, the outreach programs in the community, the open house, 9/11 ceremonies, anything that had to do with it. And the police suffered the same issues. We just are unable in 2020 to have those critical outreach programs of reaching everything from the young kids in the school, the fourth graders, all the way up to the 1,000 people that we reached last year in the open house that we had in October. That's very difficult. In spite of that, we tried to do as much in-house training as we possibly could. We stood up a very important new team this year, thanks to you, the underwater rescue and dive team with the numerous bodies of water that we have in and around Elmhurst. We never did have the ability to have an immediate rapid response of divers to an incident, and it lacked in the area as well. We now have that team. They were able to stand up and train to a proficient level. But again, I see a lot of those support programs, which are really so crucial in our operation, to not be able to be taken to full fruition in the rest of '20 and in '21. So, with that, a snapshot of 2020, as I looked at the numbers, were 83% through the fiscal year that I looked at, 82% expended in our budget. So, we're keeping a very close eye on it. Granted, we do have some outliers and some wide swings, salaries and overtime to be one of the first in the current year. We're running two personnel short of authorized strength right now. And as a result of that, that has caused some increases in overtime, but probably not the most substantial increases in overtime. We're seeing sick personnel, just normal sick, non-duty-related in the area of $112,000 to date. Open positions, open authorized spots of $115,000. So, just those two alone, $227,000 in additional overtime cost. COVID-related, we had a tremendous number because unfortunately through the year, we had cases of exposures, of confirmed COVID and contracted COVID cases to our personnel. Those had to be either self-monitored or self-quarantined for 14 days. And as a result of that, COVID-related coverages and injuries, on-duty, duty-related, including work comp, were in the area in excess of $222,000. So, while wages and salaries were held low, the overtime, as you see in your numbers, reflected injuries and the overarching issue of COVID-19. That said, throughout the balance of 2020, when the direction was to stop to essential expenses and essential costs, we've maintained a line on that with safety items, obviously, safety equipment. We had excessive expenses there when we needed costs that... When we needed supplies that weren't being provided by DuPage County through the Department of Homeland Security, which we did get quite a bit of support from them. But if we had to get immediate resources, those were expended through safety equipment line items. However, those were transferred back and put into the CARES Act submittals for reimbursement as well. So, we did see some swings in the pension, as was discussed by the city manager '20 and what will be '21 and '22 due to unfunded liability issue and benefit changes. In addition to the capital expense of the new ladder for fiscal '20, we also made some changes to... An improvement, very necessary improvements to the training facility in the industrial park and an update to what is known as a Source Capture system at Station 1, which will also be in the budget for FY '21 for Station 2. Source Capture removes the carcinogens causing exhaust fumes that contain carbon dioxide, nitrogen from the diesel apparatus. When it starts up in the building, it automatically removes it and exhausts it to the outside. It's a system known as Source Capture. We replaced one at Station 1, funded in total from a grant that we received. And we look to replace the one now at Station 2, which we're holding together with leftover parts from the Station 1 repair down at Station 2. Very important, for years, we never had those types of... Those are the hoses that hang from the ceilings. We never had those types of systems in the buildings. Caused cancer. We were literally eating diesel particulate off of dinner plates in the firehouse. So, we've come a long ways there. Moving into the... To next year's budget. Moving into the, to next year's budget, no new positions, save for the two that were down right now. No major capital from the standpoint of apparatus or vehicles until 2022. We are looking to continue on a three-year program, '19, '20, and '21, to make necessary repairs to the building at the training facility. Structural components, much more exterior than interior. Structurally, the building is beginning to wear. Gravity is impacted severely over the years, everything from roofing and tuck pointing, and then we have to move inside and do some work on the interior from the fires and the heat that have been promulgated from training. And then the second is the Source Capture at Station 2. Those are the only two major capital issues that we're looking at for fiscal '20, for fiscal '21. It's a very flat, very austere budget, which if '21 proves good on a lack of a resurgence or a recession on the COVID, we have some monies that we have in there for safety equipment that will not need to be expended, but need to be in there, because obviously, we have to prepare for the worst and hope for the best. So we have grants, grant money, again, that we're looking at for the Source Capture. We have a $24,000 grant for the position from IEMA, Illinois Emergency Management Agency, for our emergency management director. We received a small, albeit nice, grant from Illinois Water Company, Illinois American Water Company. So we continue to look out for opportunities to bring money in to offset the expenses that we have as well. So that pretty much is the balance of '20 and fiscal '21 in a nutshell. It reflects about a 3% overall increase in wages and salaries, 2.99%, that are contractual. The estimate wasn't needed. We had the actual numbers from contract negotiations and settling the CBA with the bargaining unit. And other than that, I would entertain any questions that you might have.
Okay, we're on page 116, 117, or anything else that Chief brought up in his presentation? Anybody have any questions? Alderman Deuter.
Thank you, Mayor. On page 116, under contractual services, line 3018. So this is for Ducomm, and I would have expected that that's more level funding. I'm wondering why in 2020, the estimated was so much lower than the budget.
The estimated in 2020 was lower, Alderman, because after review of the statements of revenues, the third quarter shares were eliminated to the member agencies, and the manager very much had a lot to do with that in his position with Ducomm. So the share cost that we would have normally had to expense for police and fire for Ducomm was credited to us or not passed on. So that's why, that's why you see that $224,000. It normally would be relatively flat from '19 to '20.
Thank you.
If I can add to that, as Chief Freeman said, a number of agencies that we work with, like Ducomm, like the Water Commission, have recognized that now is an opportunity, because a lot of managers and mayors make up the boards of these, anytime there's an opportunity where perhaps their rainy day fund can be used as well, we're making sure that's happening.
Great, thank you.
But the manager did catch that, and that was a nice plus for us this year. Similarly, a little further down to Alderman and uniforms, we encumbered, it was a little bit of a drop, so we encumbered monies last year to roll over to this year for uniform purchases, turnout gear and the like. So it reflected a typical decrease.
Good to know, thank you.
Alderman Brennan.
Thank you. A few questions on the same topic. I'm not sure if it's on page 116 with wages on 1001, 1002 or not. I think it ties to that, but I also think it ties to our contract services with Metro and Superior. So I'm just going to ask the blanket statement without trying to identify the line item. I think it's been, and Chief, remind me if I am way off on this, about three years that we've had Rapid Response Vehicle 1.
Rescue 1, correct.
I think it was in 2017. I was trying to actually search board docs before I actually misspoke. I think that's when I saw we signed the contract, or the extension, or the change of the contract for that. I know that we've done periodic updates on Rapid Response Vehicle 1. I don't recall when the last one was. I wasn't able to find it before I grabbed the mic here to ask you some questions. But I would like to make ALS versus BLS Rapid Response Vehicle a circle back item, and that's why I don't know exactly what line item to put it under. Where is Metro and Superior in regards to the budgeting in this year's budget, as well as where are we, and this is the other thing I was trying to look up, where are we in the contract year? Because I know we extended it, or I think we at least changed it, if not extended it, back in 2017 when we did the Rapid Response Vehicle. But I'm not sure exactly where we are in the contract year, so that's question two. And the last thing is, I'm just considering, you know, the city has stated, Chief yourself as well as the city manager, on how positive Rapid Response Vehicle Number 1 has been. And I know this is more of a, hey, we need to tighten our belt type of year due to COVID and the downed economy due to COVID. But is it something to consider, and that's why I want to make it a circle back item, of maybe if it is that successful, do we do a second vehicle along that lines, and what would be the additional cost?
I can take part of that, Alderman. Where the contract is listed, I know Finance Director Truzine can address, the part-time under 1002 is not the part-time or the contract with Metro. This is part-time where firefighters work off and work in the fire prevention code enforcement, et cetera. The, I believe, we recently had this conversation, I believe the contract runs till September 21.
Yes, I believe that's true.
If I'm remembering it correctly. And the Rescue 1, as we constantly look at it, I feel based on the call volume and the numbers, we're not yet at an expansion of either Rescue 1 or Rescue 2 or a third medic transport. Because of the success of Rescue 1, one of the things that we've seen is the reduced ALS on scene time, as well as the decrease in dependence on our neighbors to bring in additional ambulances. Six months ago, that was as low as 3%. Now we're down close to 2% the amount of time we have to call a mutual aid ambulance to support Elmhurst, because our ambulances were not available. Rather, Rescue 1 has filled that void, quick turnarounds at the hospital by Medic 1 and Medic 2, which are our two ambulances, and Rescue 1 filling in back and forth and moving up and down. One thing we did, based on a statistical study a while back, is we moved Rescue 1. It was initially when we brought it up, and you supported Rescue 1 coming into service, it was housed at Station 1 up at 404 York. Now we moved it down to the south side, because we saw a greater volume of calls on the south side, greater travel distances down south, and a higher dependence on Medic 2 being out of quarters for those calls than Medic 1 was. So we moved Rescue 1 down south, and it's, really has worked out, and it's reduced that paramedic-to-patient response time even more so. And contract, Tom, I forget where we have that located.
That is under line item K, Health Services, page 150. It's further down for tonight. I think it's unlikely we're going to get there tonight, so we will note that it's on a circle back.
Thank you. If I may, Mr. Mayor.
I have a question for you, Alderman Brennan. So you, you had a three-part question. One was about advanced versus basic, contract year, which I think was answered, and then rapid vehicle response. I'm just curious, can you, for staff's sake, can you clarify what your question is about advanced versus basic? Is it on certain vehicles, or?
Well, it was the overall topic that we discussed, it looks like about a little bit over three years, on what is the best method to go? Because currently, we're BLS Fire Department, and we, our solution at the time was Rapid Response Vehicle Number 1 to have that ALS capability. So maybe it wasn't really more of a question, more of a statement of something that we should consider as part of the circle back request. You know, I don't know if Rapid Response Vehicle Number 1 is still the solution to supplement and provide some level of ALS service in the city of Elmhurst. I'm actually surprised by the Chief's answer of that Rapid Response, I have to keep looking at my notes, Rapid Response Vehicle Number 1 is currently staged, if you will, for lack of a better term, on the south side. My assumption, and this is just anecdotal, was more, north side was more of an older community, so I would have thought that more of the calls and more of the need from an ALS perspective would be on the north versus the south. So offline, I would love to have a further discussion on that, because that was, again, from my anecdotal perspective, a surprising answer. But I guess, essentially, I think it was more of, part of the circle back, I think we should just look at ALS versus BLS again, is Rapid Response Vehicle, and only having one the solution. The Chief stated in his response to me that he feels due to the number of calls, it is. But as a council, I would like to pursue that further.
As a mayor, if I may?
Yeah, absolutely.
Just as a quick follow-up, we thought the very same, which was why initially we relocated Rescue 1 north, but with a lot of the commercial industrial shutting down in the evenings, and much of the south being residential, multifamily, and increasing so down south, and the calls going to the 400 and the 420 butterfields and longer duration of calls, that's what tipped the scales, and we converted that into looking at the statistical data to prove what we thought, and sure enough, it bore it out. And just probably for the benefit of the newer Aldermen, the ALS, BLS, advanced life support, basic life support, all the fire apparatus is equipped with all the necessary Illinois Department of Public Health basic life support equipment, and many of the firefighters, they're all EMTs, but many of them are also paramedic. The Medic 1, Medic 2, and Rescue 1 are fully advanced life support and have all the equipment that they need for drug intervention and so forth. And the, what was a big concern in the past was the fire truck arriving before the ambulance. Now the frequency of that has been greatly diminished, where the medics or Rescue 1 arrive first, begin advanced intervention. The firefighters who come on the apparatus while trained in the basic, the ones that are paramedic, have that advanced skill where they can help out even more to the two or three paramedics that are already on the scene. So that's the ALS, BLS difference. We are a little different in that standpoint, granted, but we've, I feel we've greatly overcome that and compensated for the fact that the fire apparatus is BLS, the ambulances are ALS.
Any other questions? Alderman Brennan.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, thank you so much. The services your team provides are excellent for Elmhurst.
Thank you.
I'm on 116, 10-1, or 10-1 and 10-3. I just wanted to clarify a couple of things. I thought I heard you say you're down two firefighters today.
Yes, sir.
And your plans are to fill those two?
Well, we're on a freeze right now, so we're operating without those two positions, and as a result, we've got 115,000, 115,000 in overtime due to those open positions, which is less than if we hired those two positions. So we're operating without them now, but we have in the past, and with the freeze on, we continue to operate, and we have not compromised any of our services as a result of that.
So 2021 does not have those, that head count being filled?
They are in there.
They are in there, okay.
Yeah, there's placeholders in the budget for those two positions. But the overtime, then, is also a little bit higher, because at the point, if the point of authorizing the hiring, we're still in the transition, we're going to have some overtime until they come up to speed based on their training and certification.
You knew where I was going with that, so thank you for that. So just for clarity, and I don't know your business, but, so what drives overtime if you're down head count, right? You need more from the rest of the team. I heard you reference sick personnel, illness, injured firefighters, another driver for that, are those the main ones?
I'm sorry, sir.
Are those the main reasons for overtime?
Yes, we've had, we've had some serious short and long-term duty-related injuries, which have put personnel off. So while we get some compensation back under work comp insurance, nonetheless, it creates the overtime needs.
Thank you, Chief.
You bet.
I'll add just one thing for everybody as it relates to what the city manager said and Alderman Brennan's question. We did the similar thing 10 years ago, 12 years ago, as it relates to personnel with a hiring freeze. So we call these dark positions. There hasn't been a structural change in what we're doing. So our structure says we have this many firefighters or this many police, or even staff. You know, I know that there's staff positions we haven't filled yet. So just to add, city manager, this budget has, is fully staffed. There hasn't been a structural change, but there is, still exists a hiring freeze, so there are dark positions. So you'll see those dollars in here, but they're, what they're called, dark positions. Whether or not there's a structural change at any time, that's TBD, and I know it's something that we continually ask staff to look at. So just a point of clarification or a little more information on that. Okay, any other questions for Chief? Alderman Brennan.
Yes, thank you. Alderman Brennan's question in regards to the overtime, Chief, I just want to make sure I have the understanding correctly. During your summary discussion, you made mention, I believe, at least what I wrote down, is 220,000-plus dollars of, I believe it was overtime COVID-related expenses? Is that an accurate statement, approximately 220,000 due to the impacts to COVID to the fire department?
In part COVID, I lumped COVID and duty-related injuries, because COVID counts as a on-duty and qualifies under the Family First Act. So COVID-related coverages, when somebody was off because they were exposed, and we were obligated then to hire back personnel, and other duty-related injuries. So we grouped those together as an item, $222,000 to date.
And that was out of the overtime line item, correct?
That's overtime to date, correct, 222, and then 227 of non-duty related, that being sick and the open positions, which we cover contractually, if they apply. I should probably clarify that. I said 115,000 for the open positions. If we have more than enough personnel, regardless of the vacancy, then we don't have a need to hire back. It's when we hit our minimums because of vacancies or other reasons that we have to hire back.
And just lastly, not tied to that, but Alderman Brennan's questions in regards to staffing, I mean, this is something that I think at the order of events, the city manager proposed on what we should cut back on during the years due to COVID. So City Manager Grabowski was very proactive, and leaving the two police, two fire positions vacant, not reorganizational changes, so not org charges, but leaving it vacant was one of those many a things to try to cut back our expenses forecasting the impacts to COVID.
Alderman Levin.
Two quick questions. Chief, how many, is the term fire engines, whether they're ladder trucks or pumper? How many fire engines do we have in total?
We have two pumppers, two engines, one of the same, a pumper and an engine, in frontline, and we have two in reserve.
So that's six total? Am I doing that right?
Four, four total.
All right.
And then there's one ladder device at each station, one north and one south. And then there's one ladder device at each station, one north and one south.
So that's six total vehicles?
Six total. Four of them are in frontline on a daily basis, and two of them are in reserve status.
Okay, thanks. And the other question I had is, you referred to some data regarding COVID-related responses. Is that information that you might be able to share with me, us, whatever?
Absolutely. Yeah, we, since March, we've tracked a number of confirmed or suspected calls that the medics and fire companies have gone on. And it has been consistently about 12% of the total EMS calls that we've responded to. But we track them on a monthly basis.
All right, thank you, Chief.
You bet.
Alderman Dunn.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Another COVID-related question. I know that we, the mayor issued an executive order to disallow the sworn fire and police from utilizing the childcare portion of the Emergency Family Leave Act, which you could get up to, I think, 13 weeks for that of paid, maybe it was 80%. And then you get reimbursed for that. Did we have any, anybody in the Fire Department sworn or administrative take advantage of that portion, the childcare, or maybe the federally mandated? If they were, you said some people were exposed, so that would have fell under that, and it wouldn't have been part of the executive order. So just wondering what we had. Time off for that, and I think that would be reimbursed by the federal government.
Yeah, the only qualifying personnel we had were those that were actually exposed. We didn't have anybody that requested or petitioned for time off as a result of daycare for their families.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions for Chief Freeman before we move on? I think that does it. Chief, thank you very much.
Mayor, two other real quick items under the Fire Department.
Lay it on me.
The very next would be, in order would be the, what is called the Wireless Radio Alarm Services on page 119. This, again, compared to 2020 is a very flat ask. Primarily involves replacement costs, some additional radios. This is the Radio Fire Alarm Network that we have in the businesses in the community that automatically transmit the report of an alarm directly. It's a seconds involved in the transmission of a detected smoke or fire condition in a building. So these are for replacement radios, not radios like the firefighters wear or police officers wear. These are the radios that transmit the signal in the building. Batteries, phone service, all the related costs. These are upfront costs that the city bears and then is translated into a quarterly cost to the businesses. And it's been a long, longstanding means of transmitting alarms in the city of Elmhurst as opposed to a third-party, a central station, alarm system, et cetera. So not much of a difference at all between 2020 budgeted or estimated and the ask for 2021.
Any questions? All right.
And the last under fire is AIMA. ESDA, which is the coordinator, is Don Novak, who continues to do a stellar job even though he's allocated for 16 hours a week. I think he normally gets his 16 hours in by Tuesday. But the salaries in this case are subsidized by a grant from AIMA, from the Illinois Emergency Management Agency, and the amount of roughly every year between 22 and 25,000 of his salary or his wage cost. And he assists, obviously, citywide, police, fire, public works, everything from emergent to non-emergent situations, activities in the town, equipment that we need, barricades and the like. And so, again, this is a fairly flat ask from 2020, and it just reflects normal increases in supplies and parts and equipment that he needs that go to the three major departments in the city of Elmhurst. And his area of other expenses, much like the Fire Department, training, travel, conferences, were all but eliminated this year because of COVID.
Questions for Chief Ruth? I'm sorry.
Or Chief Freeman.
Chief Freeman. I'm trying to get Ruth out of here as quickly as possible.
I'm trying to get out of here to get him up here.
Any questions, remaining questions for Chief Freeman? All right, Chief.
Again, thank you very much.
Now, we're gonna let you go. Thank you very much.
So, Mr. Mayor, next is Police, and I think we have enough time left for tonight. Could be close.
Let's give it a shot.
So that, the expenditure detail is on page 123. Department overview is on page 51. And with that, I will turn it over to Chief Ruth.
Good evening. I'll give you a brief overview in terms of where we're at today, in terms of our calls, crime trends that we're seeing. Then I'll jump in quickly to the budget for 2021, and hopefully answer any questions that any of you may have. An overview of the department. DUCOM, DUCOM reports to us on a monthly basis, and we look at this information very critically in terms of overall activity levels. So, and we compare it year-to-date, and we compare it to same period of time last year. So if we look at January to October 1st, our 911 calls and officer activity, initiated activity, is down 20%. DUCOM overall, for all the DuPage Counties, I'm sorry, DuPage Communities in DuPage County that are associated with DUCOM, are down 22%. So we're consistent with what everybody else is experiencing throughout DuPage County. We have seen some, although the activity level is down, we have seen some uptick in crime trends that have been occurring lately. And again, we compare this year-to-date, just to kind of see where we're at. There's historical trends that we experience and we anticipate to occur certain periods of time. It gets busy certain periods of time, it historically gets low. The good news is robbery is down, three compared to seven at the same point of time last year. Year, again, year-to-date assaults are up, 128 compared to 116. Aggravated assaults are up 15 year-to-date compared to nine during the same period last year. Residential burglary is slightly up, 20 compared to 15 at the same point last year. Burglary to auto is almost double, 175 year-to-date compared to 80 last year. And a majority that we're, that we're seeing is residents that are leaving their cars unlocked. Car theft is up 21 compared to 13 last year. And deception, identity theft is also up, 252 compared to 193 year-to-date, same period. So we're seeing an uptick in crime, and talking to my colleagues in other communities throughout DuPage County and Cook County, they're experiencing similar trends, some of the things that they're saying. Some of the things that we expect to see and do for 2021 is an implementation of NIBERS, what's called NIBERS, and that's a national incident-based reporting system. Currently, we report all of our crime to the FBI as part of their Uniform Crime Report. That's a summary-based report at the end of the year that we share with the state of Illinois and the FBI. And 99.9% of agencies across the country share the similar data with the FBI, but it's summary-based. So all it'll ask, or all that we would share is how many robberies, how many assaults, how many arsons, how many murders. Under NIBERS, it's going to be much more dynamic. It's gonna look at relationships in terms of objects that are stolen, value of things that are stolen, a time of day, day of week. Ultimately, will help law enforcement operate more efficiently across the country. One of the other things that we're looking at for 2021 is a purchase of a scenario-based decision simulator. We're going to use asset forfeiture funds for that, so it won't impact the general fund. And the purpose of that is to train our officers on de-escalation techniques and proper response to critical decision-making. One of the other things that we will be rolling out in 2021 is DACRA e-ticketing system for our officers and parking enforcement people to, instead of handwriting all citations for municipal ordinances, parking tickets, and traffic violations, that information will be just typed right into a system and it'll go seamlessly captured. And currently, it's handwritten. Somebody has to enter that data into a computer system and then move it along. So this is going to help us improve efficiency throughout this process. And hopefully for 2021, COVID will go away, not soon enough, of course. And we're going to get back to some of our community policing initiatives. 2019, in terms of how we police changed mid-March, mid-March. And all of the interactions, engagements, community policing initiatives that we have historically participated in and been involved with, really came to a halt just due to COVID-19. So getting into some highlights for the budget for 2021, if you look at page 123 of your book, I'll highlight a few of the, a few of the highlights. Our goal was to come in with a flat budget, with the exception of wages and benefits, as Chief Freeman had mentioned and City Manager Grabowski had mentioned. The staffing levels in terms of the budget is presented as all positions are filled. We're currently short two sworn officers. One is a patrol officer, and the other position, right now, it's a commander. And that's as a result of a recent retirement. So two sworn officers is not impacting us in terms of our daily operations that much. Some of the significant areas I just want to kind of bring out to you. Chief Freeman had kind of touched on it briefly with DUCOM. And if you look at 3018, we were budgeted for 900,000, and the, it looks like the expenditure this year is going to be down to 701,000. Very similar to what the Fire Department experienced and City Manager Grabowski explained is that we were not billed for the third quarter bill for DUCOM. So that results in a bit of a savings for us. We're anticipating, although we haven't received a bill for next year, we're anticipating for budget purposes about a 4% increase. So you'll see a slight increase from 9 to 936 on line 3018. One of the other highlighted areas is 3048, and that's Police Social Service. There's no, there's no increase for 2011, but I'd received quite a few questions over the last maybe six to eight months, asking us if we had a social worker or maybe we should get one and all of that. We have an outsource that we utilize. It's Dave Hahn and Associates, and Stephen Burr is our contact now. We've used Dave Hahn and Associates for well over 20 years. I'd almost venture to say close to 30, that we've had a relationship with them. We want to be very careful in terms of confidentiality with our social worker. And, you know, we don't want him to discuss, nor can he discuss with us, some of the cases that he's involved with and working on. But we've asked just for categories and numbers at the end of the month, just for us to get an idea in terms of his workload. He handles about 180 referrals by us a year, which is a little bit more, give or take, than 15 per month in some of the areas and topics that he's giving counseling on. His grief counseling, we call him out at times for death notifications. We have to go to somebody's house and tell them that their loved one has been killed. Sometimes child custody issues become very complex, and sometimes it's more than the street officers can handle in terms of addressing and resolving some of those issues. So he does those. Juvenile delinquency issues, runaways, truancy, substance abuse, a lot of domestic problems and domestic issues, anxiety and depression, and mental health issues. So that's kind of a touch of the categories that our social worker is involved with. We have had some discussions with staff to find out if there are some better ways to utilize that service and for us to track it a little bit better, but not breach any confidentiality between the social worker and, say, clients, client or patient, and back to us as well. We've also used him for some neighbor disputes that tend to percolate with us that we respond to quite a few times. Some other areas, if you look down at 3092, under contract staffing, in 2020, we budgeted 51,000, and in 2021, it's budgeted at 268,000. Well, the purpose for that is going to be on the J form on page 125. And in August of this year, we had outsourced our school crossing guards to a private company and service. Staff had been looking at this for about two years, trying to determine the feasibility, number one, the cost, and then to make sure that we weren't going to get a less level of service by having a private company administer the school crossing guard program. We have 25 school crossing guards, and after, after a lot of research and an RFP, we went with a company and they took over in August. But school is kind of been intermittent, and so they're not being fully utilized at this point. Well, the good news is, is we're not being billed for that, a lot of that. So there is a cost savings there. Some of the parochial schools are and have been in session, and we've been using, we've been using the school crossing guards at those locations. So that is an increase in contract staffing, but you'll see a reduction in part-time wages. And ultimately, it's going to save some direct costs in terms of salaries, but also the workman's comp issue and the workman's comp insurance, which was starting to creep up on us with some injuries that were involving crossing guards. That's really it for any of the things that really kind of glare at, at me at this point. If you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to try to address them as best I can.
Questions for Chief Ruth? Alderman Levin?
Alderman Levin?
Thank you, Mayor. Two questions. One is, I was on public safety when we converted to the contractual crossing guard program. And then I saw a number of signs around town, like they were looking like they were still trying to hire, you know, like they were placed on corners. Are they able to, one of the concerns we had talked about was their ability to fully staff, are we fully staffed with all the crossing? This was Andy Fran?
Yes.
Yeah, are they able to provide everything that they were supposed to do?
So far, yes. We, we say encourage them, but we were hopeful that a majority of our current crossing guards were going to stay with their particular locations and then go with the new provider. To my understanding, many of them have, although some of them have not. Andy Fran will struggle as we struggled in in finding people that have interest in in putting in those couple of hours every, in the middle of the day to do that. But so far, the schools have not been fully opened yet, so we haven't experienced any any difficulties or challenges yet.
I was hoping they'd have those good-looking uniforms, but they passed, but whatever. The other question, well, it's not really a question, it's more of a comment. I know that we've gone through some rough times in terms of protests and civil gatherings, and I think in conversations that I know you've had with many members of the community, you seem to be very highly in tune with what's going on, and I just wanted to say, compliment you and appreciate that. No other questions. Thank you.
Alderman Brennan?
Thank you. Thank you, Chief, for the summary, first and foremost. You answered the question, obviously, about staffing. We already talked to Chief Freeman about that, and your your perspective on, you know, it not having much of an impact, having those two positions being vacant. With that, I know we discussed as a, at the Finance Committee a little bit in regards to those two vacant positions and the potential of moving forward with, I don't want to say removing the hiring freeze, because the city manager is the one who self-imposed that on himself, but in regards to considering a policy decision on, should we move forward with, with filling those vacant positions? Can you kind of walk me through what is the process and rough timeline? I believe it is, they have to go through the police pension, not pension board, the Police and Fire Commission. It's getting late, as Mayor Morley always says, nothing good happens after 10, and we're approaching that. And walk us through that process and the, more importantly, the timeline of that process. So as we continue to have these positions vacant, when we decide to, or maybe more accurately, the city manager decides to move forward, you know, what could be the expectation of fulfilling, filling those two vacant positions?
The hiring is is done with the approval through the Board of Fire and Police Commission. There, there's a written examination that that is administered. There is a polygraph, successful candidates advance to a polygraph. If they pass a polygraph exam, they then advance to a background investigation. Upon successful completion of a background investigation, if it's approved, they that would be invited to participate in a structured oral interview with the Board of Fire and Police Commission. At the end of that interview, the Board and Fire Police Commission would make a decision to advance the candidate, or not advance a candidate, to the next step in the process. And as vacancies occurred and were approved, offers of contingent offers of employment would be made. The candidate would then take a psychological test and a medical exam. And if the candidate is successful in that, then they would be hired. Upon hiring, we, we would have to send the candidate through the police academy. It's, it's our practice to not hire candidates unless the the window is very close for the fire, I'm sorry, for the police academy. So we don't want to hire them in in January and not have a police academy seat available until May or June. And that would just, wouldn't make good financial and economic sense. So we try to time the hiring several weeks before the academy start. They would go through an academy, it's it's 12, 14 weeks. After the academy, they would come back. If they're successful there, they have to take a state exam and have academic, you know, have to make it through the academic rigor of an of an academy. Then there's about a four-month process with a field training officer. Now we take what they've learned academically and and make it functional. And then if they're successful at that, then they're released to solo patrol. So if your question is, how long does it take from the date they're hired until the time they're solo, is about eight months.
Thank you for that. And that just goes into, as I think I tried to preface that question, goes into the consideration on how long do those positions lay vacant? And that helps me with possibly future decisions moving forward in this fiscal budget year upcoming. One of the questions that I've gotten over and over again, more so recently than in years past, is, does the police department do quotas or standards, or what does the police department do when it comes to, I'll call them infractions, I don't want to even call them tickets. I've always been told, and it is my understanding, that the Elmhurst Police Department does not have quotas. And I, from what I understand, there's standards versus quotas. Can you speak to that a little bit, please?
Yes. Actually, we we covered that in the, in the presentation that was put on just a few weeks ago. But the police department, the Elmhurst Police Department, does not have production standards. Prior to me coming here, they did have production standards. Officers were expected to write a certain number of tickets in certain categories, and the failure to do so after, after repeated attempts to correct the shortfall was, was was met with discipline. I I don't believe in that, my philosophy. So when I came here in November of 2012, that was one of the first things that we eliminated was production standards. We do expect our officers to go out and and do their job, and we expect them to give a solid day's work. And, and, you know, as, you know, when you, when you deal in management, whether it's management in a police department, whether it's management in the private sector, you're going to have a bell curve, and and you're going to have some high performers, the middle of the road folks, and and perhaps some that that might need a little more coaching and guidance. So we provide feedback to officers that that may need to have some special attention in certain areas, but that's not met with discipline. So the bottom line is, we do not have a quota, we do not have a performance standard. That's it.
Thank you. I know we talked about this last year, license plate readers. Are we complete with the, all of the installation of all our, that we plan to do with license plate readers? And are we seeing the benefit that at least I believe, anecdotally, we've seen?
Yes. Several years back, we we put in the budgets for ALPR, automated license plate readers. We did that over a two-year period. They are installed throughout the city. Unfortunately, they're they're not in, I think, two locations that I'd like to have them in, and that's through no fault of our own. It's, it's getting permission through the Illinois Department of Transportation, IDOT. We'd like to have an LPR on Route 83, but we don't seem to have that. And we're continuing to work, Deputy Chief McLean is continuing to work with IDOT to try to to grant us some permissions to do that. Other than that, there's a GL fence at at other strategic locations throughout the city. We've used them, they've helped us solve crimes, they've helped us prevent crimes. We recently activated what's called TASK Alert, which is Target Alert Service, and that's if if there's a stolen car that comes into town, or a car that's wanted in connection with a violent crime, or a car that's wanted in connection with an Amber Alert, the license plate. The LPR picks it up and then notifies our officers that 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 vehicle has passed one of our LPR cameras. And we activated that, we activated that feature probably maybe four months ago, five months ago or so, and we've had some, some success overnight. The trend that we were seeing was people in stolen cars, usually stolen from Chicago, were coming out to to Elmhurst and entering, entering our community and breaking into cars or committing other criminal offenses. So the TASK Alert alerts us that the car is past a specific location. We send squad cars out to that immediate vicinity to search for that car, and we've, we've been lucky to to find the car, and sometimes they flee from us.
And last question. Obviously, there's been a lot of discussion about diversity and inclusion, and I know you, you, the police department, has done a presentation, as you already mentioned. Is there any need of increasing the training budget or doing any additional training going the fiscal year 2021 tied directly to, or even indirectly to, diversity and inclusion?
I think we're, we are healthy in terms of the financial side of the budget for training. I think the biggest concern that I have right now is getting through COVID-19 so that we can, so that those classes can be hosted and sponsored, and we can get our our people into them. You know, there's, you know, there's a bunch of state mandates that that require us, and they include use of force, cultural diversity, procedural justice, civil rights, constitutional law, mental health awareness. There's, there's special investigations training, which is required through a state mandate, lead homicide investigators, and recertification that has to occur every two years, sexual assault investigator and recertification training. Our SROs need to be trained and certified. So, you know, we're seeing all of all of those things. CIT training is, you know, is very, very critical for us, and there's a diversity and inclusion component into the CIT training. You know, we're also looking at executive-level training. And one of the things that that we started since 2012 is to have a strategic vision in, not just in terms of of training our personnel, but also training in executive-level classes. At Northwestern University, their Staff in Command and the Executive Management Program. So, you know, we've, we've been successful in moving many of our people through that. It's not all 100%, but we are definitely chipping away at that. During COVID-19, we've utilized out of the training budget, it's called Police Law Institute, so it's online training, so we've been able to to utilize some of the things that are out there. So the long answer to your question is, is I think we're adequately funded right now for training. We are watching for for new and topical things to come out there, and it's more than the old way of thinking where it was more operations and tactics generated.
Thank you. I appreciate that. The reason why I asked that question, because the budget for training is, and essentially has been flat since 2019. So I just wanted to ensure that we were covering all bases. So thank you.
Okay. Before I move on, there was made mention, and I just want to make sure everyone's aware. I think they are, but anybody watching at home or watching this at a later time. We did host a police forum, City Manager, myself, and most importantly, Chief Ruth. It's about an hour and a half long, and it is posted on our Elmhurst TV YouTube section of YouTube, whatever you want to call it. I think there's also a leak somewhere on our, on our website. But I would encourage everybody to take the time to watch it, because there is a whole lot of good information in there. I know that Chief never gets tired of answering those questions by residents, but I do think that anybody, if anybody watched this, they'd be better for it. And I would encourage all elected officials as well. I'm not saying all elected officials have not watched, except it only says there's been 98 views. So.
I saw 23 times.
Okay. The rest of you have some work to do. Alderman Brennan, you got a question?
I do. Thanks, Mayor. I have two quick questions. But first off, Chief and Deputy Chiefs, thank you so much for the the services EPD provides the residents. I think it's spectacular. My first question's on page 124, line item 6075. I just don't know what DUI tech fund expenditures are. Could you elaborate on that, Chief?
Yes, that's, that's part of a category that I, we categorize as part of the asset forfeiture program. The DUI tech fund is a, is a certain fine that's applied to DUI arrests as part of the the fine that occurs when somebody goes to court and the case is adjudicated. And and a percentage of dollars come back to the arresting agency. And they're to use that for equipment, training, and basically purposes for the enforcement of DUI offenses. So it's a placeholder. Some of the, some of the things that we use DUI tech purchases are would be cameras, video cameras for the squad cars. We've put video cameras in the, in the booking area of the police station recently. We've, if if any of that equipment fails or needs to be replaced, we do that. We recently, within the last two years, I think, purchased a new intoxicilizer, a breath instrument to measure the amount of alcohol in someone's breath, be for their, to determine their BAC. Things of that nature.
Okay. Excellent. Thanks. I think the next question would go to Director Trozine, but it's same page, 124, 90, 9501 and 03. At one time, I I knew this, but I forgot. So I'm assuming these are allocations from from the Finance Department, and if so, can you just explain a little bit? Is it headcount-driven? What are, what's the driver? Because I look at the the difference between that allocation with the fire department versus the police department, the police department's numbers significantly higher.
So you're absolutely correct. Those are two allocations that we do. The data processing one is based on our IT department, and so we allocate all of the IT department expenditures throughout the budget. The second one is Central Garage, that's the equipment maintenance, 110, 6047. So same thing, those expenses in Equipment Maintenance Division of the General Fund for Public Works, we allocate those. We do need to look at those allocations again, it's been quite a while. I believe IT, we we did it by actually computers that are out there. Central Equipment, I believe, was based on, if I recall correctly, just maintenance that we did to to the different fleet and everything. So again, two things that we need, it's on the to-do list, that we really need to take a look at those allocations and update them, it's been a while.
Thanks, Tom.
And just to follow up too, on the Chief's comment on the DUI tech fund, there is an offsetting revenue that's on page 88 for that, so it is offset by revenue. It's not dollar for dollar, but it's under fines and penalties, 351, 0500. It's not dollar-for-dollar, but it's under fines and penalties, three-fifty-one, oh-five-zero-zero.
Alderman Dunn. Yeah, just a quick question. You mentioned the school resource officers, and I don't imagine they're fully engaged now, nor were they in the spring. Has there been any budget adjustment because of that? Are they redeployed? How's that work?
I would probably look to Tom Trozine to see how much, if any, that was adjusted with the school district. We have a contractual agreement with them. That's the first part. The second part is, when they were no longer, when the schools were shut down, we deployed those officers, we put them in uniform and put them back in the field around the street. So that helped us in terms of our staffing levels. We experienced some officers who are on extended leave for FMLA, and so that helped us backfill.
I don't know the exact formula for the service officers in the schools, but I do know we did stop billing as the schools closed and the officers were not working in the schools.
Makes sense. Any other questions for Chief Ruth? Alderman Deuter.
Thank you, Mayor. I actually just wanted to add to a comment that you made. You talked about the police forum video, you mentioned ninety-eight views on the site. Just to clarify, because I think it goes to how interested people are in the work you're doing, Cassandra Schef said that they had to repost that video, and the original post had two-hundred-and-fifty views.
I feel much better.
So, yeah. It was a lot of work going into that video, it was viewed much more than just ninety-eight times.
I now believe at least a third of the city council has watched it.
And many residents.
Okay. Any other questions or clarifications?
I did want to quickly, very quickly point out on buildings under fifty-dash-zero-one. We have been using a temporary chiller at the police station, and that's about fifty-thousand dollars per year. The building is thirty years old, so we're experiencing some issues that any building would have that's thirty years old. So that was kind of high. And if you look at the two-hundred, I'm sorry, 2019, the amount for buildings, we were looking at replacement air conditioning system, replacement boiler heating system, some other structural issues that needed to be addressed. We've got some shifting pillars on the outside of the police station, some other things which triggered the discussions about the feasibility study for a new facility. So that's been put on hold, I understand, but somebody I know, if they look at that initial number from 2019, wonders, you know, what happened to it or where did it go.
Okay. Anything else? City manager.
In addition to what Alderman Deuter and you both said about the YouTube program, the social worker, which Chief Ruth mentioned, also participated in an event that the Youth Commission and City Clerk Tamer put together, and so I'm appreciative of that, because that brought a different angle towards some of the social issues that have been out there now. So I didn't want that to go without being mentioned. Other than that, I think that wraps it up for tonight. I appreciate the council's attention to everything. Just as a heads-up, for the next meeting, we have scheduled the library and the museum to be the first ones, so it won't necessarily pick up at TIF funds, because they bring in members of their boards to speak to the council as well to their accomplishments. So expect that next time, along with other funds that we have going.
Fantastic. Entertaining motion adjourned. Motion by Alderman Kennedy, second by Alderman Palmsky. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Were adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.